I now call the Huntsville City Council Meeting to order. If all of you would like to, please rise. We have no invocation. We're going to have a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All they'd like to, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the March 26th meeting have been received and those stand approved. There's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mr. Hamilton?
It's an honor and privilege to represent the mayor at tonight's city council meeting as he is with our great partners out at Team Redstone, Frowellin, General McQuishon, who is retiring from the Army after a long distinguished career and departing from our community. If I could have Ernie Blair from the 911 Center come up, please. As he comes up, we have a resolution proclaiming this to be 911 month, which is what it is across the nation. And I'm going to give Ernie the opportunity to speak just briefly, but I think it's important for us to emphasize what a critical role the 911 Center plays in our community. And as we look at the way in which we respond to the most dangerous and most tragic events in our community, generally that starts with somebody in need calling 911 Center and a great group of professionals receiving that call, getting the necessary information and then getting the right folks to the right place, normally really, really quickly. And that only happens if you have a great team out there. And this particular facility in our community represents probably the best example of partnership amongst our communities throughout Madison County and even now has both Madison City and Huntsville have annexed over into Limestone County, really extending into a second county. And so, we're proud of the work they do and that's why we want to announce that this is 911 month and we'll let Ernie speak briefly.
Okay, well, thank you. On behalf of the fine individuals that work at the 911 Center, I want to thank you for this proclamation. We have a National Telecommunicators Week, which is next week, but we can't get to all the city councils and the county commission, you know, but we do it during the month, so you're declaring it 911 month. The team, really the family at 911 is just an all-star team. It's not only made up of the 911 employees, but the city of Huntsville employees at Huntsville Fire, Huntsville Rescue, from the Chief McFarland, Chief Lewis, Morris, on down. It's the finest bunch of individuals that are out there. The 911 professionals are just, like I say, they are an all-star team, all-star family. So, on behalf of them, I'd like to thank you for doing this proclamation and do want to quickly, we are doing some things at the 911 Center to take it to the next level. We've just completed a strategic plan, which includes a vision and mission statement. And we have a website you can go to. It's MadCo, like Madison County, madco911.com. You can go look and read our vision statement or mission statement, get a lot of information on 911 locally and links nationwide. We've also produced a video that is a public education piece. 911 is sort of a three-legged stool. You've got to have the equipment, you've got to have good people, but you also need the best quality callers. And so, we're trying to help educate the public on how to give us the information we need in order to serve the public better. So, I'm going to play this video and we'll go from there. So, thank you.
Councilmembers, before the video is played, we need to approve this resolution. It's a resolution declaring the month of April is Huntsville-Madison County 9/11 month. The Chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let the record indicate it's 4-0. Mr. Kling is not here. Please go ahead.
About four minutes, so very, very, but I think you'll like it. I think I go first, sort of cheesy, but you all, you know, you want it that way so people will remember it. Here we go.
911, what's the location of your emergency?
I'm at Hamburger Farm Restaurant, 500 Bomo Section Road. There's a man choking on a dill pickle. He can't breathe. I'm sitting at the intersection of University Drive and Jordan. A car's went into a pole. The driver's moving, but he could be trapped. The door's stuck. Right now, two big guys are coming out of a backyard with a flatscreen TV. We're at 104 Liberty Lane. They've got a white Jeep.
Kyle Thomas is an MBC, Most Valuable Caller. His skill level on the phone with 911 operators is off the charts. An MBC like Kyle stops crime, saves lives, and gets the right emergency responders to the right location, fast.
My motto, be safe, not sorry. I've been a hall monitor, a bus line sergeant, and an assistant crossing guard. It's just in my blood.
Let's talk about some serious facts. The Huntsville-Madison County 911 System Operations Center is the largest in the state. 600 calls on a regular day. When the tornado touched down in 2011, 1,200 calls in a single hour.
In the tornado's path, things out there were going crazy. And here, I don't know of one missed or mishandled call during the entire event.
People expect 100% from 911 on every call. No mistakes. Three things make that happen. Funding, to buy and maintain the best communication equipment available. Second, highly trained operators who know exactly how to handle each call, from a domestic dispute to cardiac arrest. And third, you becoming an MBC starting today.
A Most Valuable Caller doesn't have to wear a uniform or ride in a marked car. Most are regular citizens, just like you. When you see something happening, pull over in a safe place, find the closest street address, and then dial 911.
That's critical. In the old days, when 911 got started, people dialed in on a landline phone. Every phone had just one street address. Now, people carry their phones everywhere. Today's technology helps 911 get close to a location, but we still need your help to determine exactly where you are. You've got to give a street address, highway mile marker, or a large landmark to the operator.
If you call 911 and just keep driving, you won't be able to tell us the things we really need to know.
Texting 911 doesn't always work. That technology's coming, but it's not available everywhere in Alabama. To be sure you get through, you must call.
Here's what the operator will ask. What's the location of your emergency? Your phone number. In case you get cut off, 911 can call you back. What's the emergency? Other details an MBC should notice. Are people injured or sick? Do you see smoke or fire? Does someone have a weapon? Are they still on the scene? The more you can tell 911, the better prepared the police, fire and rescue, and ambulance team will be.
Once we answer your call, the process of sending a response team is underway. Have patience while we ask you some questions. It won't slow anything down. It'll make our response to your emergency even better.
Every day, these 911 operators depend on Most Valuable Callers, MVCs to stop, call, and give good, precise information. Remember what you've learned. Be that MVC.
So, we're looking at playing this Robert V. Plank's "Hawke's Great License," here at the West Side TV. So, by your board of lines, I'd be pretty much with you. Still have something to look at, making up for our... So, thank you. And also, I've read with you guys the article, the radio system that 911 sent, that's put in for all of the agencies, the article, the radio system's up and running, been running for about three years. And universally, it's live. It started here in Huntsville County, and it talks about how it's growing, the statewide system. So, once again, we're starting something good here. Thank you.
Okay, and if I could have Kenny Anderson come up, we're going to recognize another great citizen in our community.
Thank you, John. It's my privilege to introduce the April Star 99 CAFI Young Citizen of the Month, and this month she is Katherine Ward. Just to tell you a little something about Katherine, while she's coming up this way, she's an eighth grade student at Union Chapel Christian Academy. She's been engaged in a variety of different community service activities over the past three years, including Manor House, Harris Home for Children, and Kids to Love, Pajama and Book Drive. She has multiple awards and accomplishments that include the 2013 to 2014 Certificate of Achievement for Highest Math, Science, English, and History Average, so she wanted them all; 2013 and 2014 Certificate for First Place for Excellence in the State E-Cyber Mission Competition; and the 2013-2014 Principals Award for Being an Outstanding Student. The April 2015 Star 99 CAFI Young Citizen of the Month, Katherine Ward. Katherine's nominator is also here, Nita Weathers, and we're going to thank her for her nomination tonight, and you have an opportunity to nominate someone as well. We have just a few people on our team that are going to present something to you at this time, Katherine, because of your accomplishments. Congratulations.
Katherine, we're just so proud of you tonight and all of your accomplishments. I've got a certificate here and it says, "CAFI Star 99.1 and the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville is proud to honor Katherine Ward as the CAFI Star 99.1 Young Star Citizen of the Month." And it's signed by the Mayor of Huntsville, Tommy Battle, me from the Human Relations Commission, CAFI and Multicultural Affairs Officer Kenny Anderson, Huntsville Utilities' Harry Hobbs, Star 99.1 Tom Pinucci, and Huntsville Police Department Lieutenant Jeffrey Rice.
Well, when you win, you've got to get some stuff. Are you ready for some stuff? Thank you. Katherine, we appreciate everything that you've done and on behalf of Huntsville Utilities and our CEO, Mr. Jay Stowe, because we believe in investing in our youth, we'd like to give you a few things to take home. Here's an umbrella. Sometimes in life, it rains. It might happen today. Also, we want to give you a nice cup to keep you warm, something to drink to keep you warm. And we know that you're a brilliant young lady, so here's something to keep your notes And sometimes, the book is not big enough, so here's a jump drive, so you can make sure you have it. And I think, hold on. Oh, yeah, we've got some money in here for you as well, gift cards. And then, oh, by the way, I'm going to give you the bag, so you can carry it. I'm going to give this to your sponsor. The whole thing.
Katherine, congratulations. Star 99 Rocket City Broadcasting, and I have a gift bag back there. I won't go through item by item. We'll be here all night to top Harry. But congratulations, and I know you'll do very well in anything you choose to do. Congratulations.
Again, thank you, Katherine. We solicit your nominations. You can go to mystar99.com. We're doing this monthly, so we need your support. Any student is eligible to win in Madison County, and so we hope that you'll definitely go to mystar99.com and make a nomination. It's an electronic process. It's very simple. Thank you very much.
Okay, and if I could ask Ms. Opie Balch to join us up here, as well as Shay Jarboe. So, they are representing the local Board of Realtors, and as they come up, they are coming up to represent the Board of Realtors in our community as we provide a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. A lot of folks may not realize, you know, a critical piece of legislation in our nation that has helped us move forward, that continues to challenge us to move even further forward, is the Fair Housing Act. And it's now 47 years old, that act. So, I think a lot of progress, but more progress to go, right? And we certainly want to use this month in our community to remember that and reflect on those things that it means to us and what we have to do in the future. I want to give you an opportunity to speak briefly.
Thank you. On behalf of the Huntsville Board of Realtors, we really appreciate the city council proclaiming this as Fair Housing Month. This is so important for all of us, and we just appreciate them recognizing that. Thanks again.
We have one resolution for adoption only tonight. It's a resolution recognition of the opening celebration of the Confucius Institute at Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University, to be held on April 16, 2015. Is there a motion?
I would approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It carries. Dr. Showers?
President, I simply want to announce tonight that I will be presenting this resolution on behalf of the mayor and the council members on Thursday, April 16, at the BBC North Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Next, we have a presentation by the Huntsville-Madison County Conventions and Visitors Bureau. If I could ask Ms. Judy Riles to come up and explain what y'all are going to talk to us about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to come and make a short presentation to you this evening. Our chairman, Dr. Bill Salins, at a recent board meeting, was really complimentary of the social media activities that we, as the CVB, are taking on. And that's one of our strategic moves to make sure that Huntsville is well-known around the world and certainly within our nation. And I do have one other piece of exciting news before I introduce the two that are making it happen, is that we just learned that our revenues in Madison County exceeded $1 billion in revenue this past year, in 2014. We were down for the Montgomery trip, and Lisa Taylor, our State Tourism Director, shared those numbers with me. And so, over 14,760 employees are employed in the hospitality industry. So, we're a larger industry than you sometimes think. And it's my pleasure to introduce our two team members that are so instrumental in making sure that we're out there in a very strategic and strong fashion in the social media world. And that's Jessica Carlton, who is our Marketing Manager, and Stephanie Walker, who is our Consultant and Specialist in Social Media. And I'm turning it over to these young ladies.
Thank you, Judy. We're so excited to be here with you all this afternoon or evening. Just going to get this started.
And you are?
I am Jessica Carlton.
Okay.
I am the Marketing Manager at the Huntsville-Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Welcome.
And this is Stephanie Walker, as Judy mentioned. Thank you so much for allowing us a few brief moments to talk to you about the I Heart Huntsville Social Media Campaign and the new I Heart Huntsville blog. We're so excited to be here with you all this evening. So, as you know, the mission of the Huntsville-Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau is to increase the economic impact of travel and tourism to Huntsville and Madison County. And so, we do this in a variety of ways, whether that be through advertising, through media relations, through conventions, through group services and sales. We do all that we can and are constantly trying to find innovative ways to reach our audience. And our audience is the visitor and the meeting planner. So, we have 14 full-time employees, and we understand, as Judy mentioned, the economic impact of our industry. And we're so excited, actually, these numbers are now out of date, and we're excited because that's a good thing, they've increased. Our industry employs 14,000 people, over 14,000 people here in Madison County alone, and it's over $1 billion in positive economic impact for our community. And another really impressive statistic I'd like to share with you is the amount of money that the average household saves in taxes every year, thanks to the travel and tourism industry, and that's over $600. So, we're very passionate about what we do at the Huntsville and Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're excited to share with you two new initiatives that we think are going to do even more to spread awareness about our community as the excellent visitor and convention destination that it is. So, I'd like to introduce Stephanie and have her talk about the I Heart Huntsville Social Media Campaign.
Sure. Stephanie, if you'd introduce yourself, please.
Sure, thank you. I'm Stephanie Walker. I'm the Social Media Manager for the CVB. One thing we wanted to do is bring back the I Heart Huntsville, hashtag I Heart Huntsville campaign. This is our second year that we've hosted this campaign in Huntsville. Are any of you familiar with this campaign? Okay, that's great. We, let me see here. The first thing we wanted to do this year was launch this campaign again, and it's second year, on our website, huntsville.org. We started out the campaign there. We clearly stated the basic rules and listed all the wonderful prizes of our partners this year. They made it extra exciting. It really helped with the engagement of the campaign, and everybody wanted to get their hands and be that daily winner and get their hands on those prizes. It was wonderful. Each day, we posted a different prompt on three of our top-performing social media platforms, which are Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Those prompts included things like your favorite restaurant, hidden spots, your favorite view, craft beer industry, attractions, and many more. We had a different prompt every day, and the campaign lasted for two weeks. We also wanted to take it offline and off social media. We took, we did that by having I Heart Huntsville a visible presence off-site. The way we did that, we had some wonderful friends at SAS Works put together a really great photo op, you can see Don modeling that there, that featured the I Heart Huntsville campaign, and Downtown Huntsville, Inc. helped us position it very strategically on the square downtown. And it was a great chance for both residents and visitors to come by if they're walking around Huntsville and snap a photo and upload that to Facebook or Twitter or Instagram. But now that the campaign is over, this display is borrowed by our local attractions and organizations and some of our partners as yet another opportunity for guests and visitors to profess their love for the Rocket City, so the love just keeps going. This is kind of a snapshot of the social media engagement throughout the campaign. As you can see, people came out of the woodwork to participate. Everybody wanted to share their favorite things about Huntsville. It created a very impressive conversation across social media platforms, and we tracked it all using the I Heart Huntsville hashtag. So, at the end of the campaign, we had this wonderful story that was told by both residents and visitors nationally and even internationally. Since this was our second year for the I Heart Huntsville campaign, we wanted to do some new things to grow it. We decided to implement three new pieces of the campaign. We hosted our very first tweet chat on Twitter, and that was with 44 local and national tourism influencers, travel writers, bloggers, and community leaders. And Mayor Battle showed up. He was there, and he was tweeting back for the tweet chat. It was really fun. For 45 straight minutes, there was a flurry of activity on Twitter about Huntsville. And the Twitterverse lit up with posts about Huntsville's many accolades, why it's a visitor destination, and it was a really neat thing to see and watch. The second thing we did, we also wanted to take all of those gorgeous original photos that people were submitting to us during the campaign and collect those and put them in an art display after the campaign was over. So, we have three places that will be showcasing those framed photos. Jessica, was it Low Mill and the Art Museum, and what was the third? Art, all right, the Arts Council. They're all three going to be putting those photos on display, and we'll be able to see those. People can come by and see those anytime. Now, finally, on the last day of the campaign, we launched the I Heart Huntsville blog, and it's a new vehicle for continuing the promotion of Huntsville as a true visitor destination. And Jessica's going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. I want to talk about results, because they're wonderful. The hashtag I Heart Huntsville was used over 2,600 times on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram in two weeks. Over 70,000 Facebook impressions for Huntsville and Madison County were made, which is a great thing. What that translates to is when people are looking and doing their research for places to visit in the South, places to visit in the country, in the Southeast, it's more likely that Huntsville's going to pop up on their radar. Over 15 news stories were written on the social media campaign, and we had wonderful support from ale.com and the Huntsville Times, from Channel 31, Channel 19. There was a new news story every day about that day's prompt and who the winner was. And then, in the end, we had over 700 photos that we could go through that showcased the Rocket City. To give you an idea of how much the program has grown in just two years, last year we had 400 at the end of the campaign. The tweet chat was, again, 44 participants, and one thing we learned about that is how successful it is and how effective it is, and we'll definitely be using that as a CVB social media tool in the future, because they're a lot of fun and they work. So, I'm going to hand it back over to Jessica to talk a little bit more about the I Heart Huntsville blog.
Thank you, Stephanie. We're so excited about this effort. Here you see in front of you the homepage of iHeartHuntsville.com. And the goal of I Heart Huntsville is to reach visitors, both current and prospective. We want to get on the radar of those folks and convince them that Huntsville and Madison County is the place for their next vacation, and it's the place to host their next convention. And this is a great tool we're going to use to that end. As you see here, it talks about our vision and our mission. And, you know, we focus on evergreen content. We want our content to be accessed at any time of the year by a visitor and have it be relevant to them. So, how it works, we post a new blog every Wednesday. Right now, we have so much content, we don't know what to do with, which is a great thing to be working with. And we have several series that are very exciting and all oriented toward the visitor and toward that meeting planner, who makes that crucial decision of where they want to host their next convention. So, you'll see, we have a series called Attraction Pro Tips, where we talk about tips from locals on how to best explore our many wonderful attractions. We have a series called My Madison County, in which we turn over our blog to a famous local or a famous face, and we have them give their picks for visitors, what they would recommend a visitor do. Huntsville Made is a series on local shopping options, and Got to Try Rocket City Food is exactly what it sounds. We highlight that got-to-try item at local restaurants. We also have a series called Little Known Huntsville, where we highlight those facts that maybe a visitor isn't quite aware of. A most recent post we did on this is Alan Shepard's Moon Boots outside of Constitution Village. So, it's a very neat tool to be able to spread awareness about our community. The model we use is partnering up with local bloggers. So, we have a very talented team of regular contributors, and we also have bloggers who volunteer their time. They're passionate about their community, and they want to share our story. And we really couldn't do this without them. So, you know, when we're looking at what other convention and visitor bureaus and destination marketing organizations, what they're doing to stand out and to bring visitors and meeting planners to their community, there's one thing that's in common. They're blogging. When you look at Greenville, South Carolina, Charleston, Memphis, Birmingham, Knoxville, they're blogging. They're creating valuable, original content. And that does two things. That makes us valuable to the visitor. We're providing information that's important to them, that's helpful to them. But it also does something very specific, and that is help us with search engine optimization. So, when they're Googling, "where should I vacation in the South?" or "what to do in Alabama?", our website, iHeartHuntsville or huntsville.org, will pop up to the top, and we can further fulfill our mission of, first of all, having them see us, so that we can market our destination to those folks. So, I just pulled a couple of sample posts. We cover all sorts of topics, again, with the underlying theme, is it relevant to a visitor and a meeting planner? So, whether that's how to travel on a budget, why we're called the Rocket City, or one of the series that I'm most excited about, and I think that separates us from any other DMO blog in the nation, is our video blogging series. It's called Vlogging. And so, we have our regular contributor, Katherine Wright, film herself at various locations in Huntsville and Madison County, and a visitor is very much able to picture themselves in the situations that she's showing them. Another very important part of iHeartHuntsville.com is our meeting side, and this is where we dig deep into the information that meeting planners want to know. What sets us apart as a meeting destination? You know, we're one of the few places in the world where you can bring your off-site meeting to dine under an authentic Saturn V rocket. That's pretty cool, and we hope to highlight more of those aspects. So, that's, in a nutshell, that's the campaign and that's the blog. Be happy to answer any questions, and very much thankful for you allowing us a few moments to chat about that.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Carlton?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Back to your numbers, the 14,000-plus employees in the industry, this is just in Huntsville?
In Madison County.
Huntsville, Madison County.
And those numbers will be updated. I believe the full economic impact report is coming out on April 17.
That is awesome. And Ms. Riles, every time I see you, I always thank you for what a wonderful job you and your organization are doing, but I see why we are so successful now with these brilliant your organization are doing, but I see why we are so successful now with these brilliant, bright, young minds onboard with you. You've just kind of reinvented yourself here. So keep up the good work and to you two young ladies, we certainly appreciate what you all are doing to help us market our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Dr. Robinson?
I'm thinking with Stephanie sitting here, there's Rocket City Mom, there's Our Valley Events, there's the guy who goes around and takes videos of places that he's been and, you know, how does all of that work together with this?
That's a great question. You know, for us, the more content out there that's about Huntsville, the better. And we're lucky in our community to have so many great resources for that. So you'll see at the bottom of our site, we have a tab called Huntsville Resources or Rocket City Resources, we love, and we list some of those sorts sites and we're hoping to change that out as more of them develop and we can all work together to share and help each other.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions? Ms. Carlton, should we pose for the photo you're gonna tweet out tonight or?
Can we do selfies?
Yeah, sure. No, I don't know. You can come up here and do a selfie if you want, yeah.
Are you scared?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We want Insta, we want Twitter. Not Facebook, we're kind of, we're too cool for Facebook.
Hold on, hold on, we're not all here yet.
She's going, she's going the other way now. Ms. Carlton, y'all need any more time? Thank you, we appreciate that presentation. Councilmembers, tonight on our agenda, fifteen A has been deleted, sixteen A one and sixteen A two have been deleted. That's fifteen A, sixteen A one, sixteen A two have been deleted. We also have an item that the administration would like us to consider for unanimous consent. It is the appointment of Steve Ivey as a recreation, position of Director of Parks and Recreation. The mayor announced this last meeting and we approved it, but we didn't approve the salient grade, so, or the grade and the step, and so we'll do that under the mayor's time when it comes up. We have no business with outside legal representation, we have no public hearings to be held, we do have a public hearing to be set. It's a resolution to set a public hearing for Judy C. Wallace doing business at Seven 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 Luxury Bus Service LLC. This was set for the April twenty-third, this was set at April twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, regular councilman, you set for that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All is a favor setting the hearing, hearing say aye.
Aye.
Pose, it carries. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to address the council. Mr. Clarence Johnson. Ms. Johnson, if you'll give your address for the record, please.
Clarence Johnson, thirty-three oh two Butchery Drive Huntsville. Greetings to you all. I stand on behalf of the Huntsville, North Huntsville Business Association and to just give some oversight as to what has been going on and goals and all that we have come to. The North Huntsville Business Association was started about seven weeks or so ago when Dr. showers and Dr. Jenny Robinson got together and brainstormed and came up with the idea. I like to personally think that the idea came from my question and advocacy here, what about North Huntsville? Nevertheless, the organization was formed and is ongoing and is very positive in its outlook. When I consider the fact that it's just over six weeks old, it is doing a great job in inculcating the various members across North Huntsville. We have members who are landowners, realtors, we have business persons, we have, at the first meeting, we have pastors and we have a great number of individuals who are interested in North Huntsville. We began looking at what we as residents and business persons can do to help foster economic development in North Huntsville. Out North Huntsville seems to be running behind the curve of development. Things seem to be focused at other places, but we're not totally left out. About three weeks ago, Dr. showers had us to break up in groups of threes and the question was asked of each group, what is it possible that we could do on a short-term basis or a very near-future basis by way of economic development? Out of the five groups, there came some very great information, very informative, and some tangible ideas. The one that was most focused upon was the property that's located on the northwest corner of Memorial Parkway and Max Luther. It was considered that at that location, perhaps in the near future with infrastructure assistance from the city, we might be able to come up with living quarters, would come up with eateries and come up with recreation right there in that area. So then, that we will be looking at again more in detail as we continue to consider other things and approaches as far as those of us in North Huntsville are able to do. Now on yesterday, we had the fortune of going on a bus tour of North Huntsville. That was very enlightening. Dr. showers had informed us that he would-
Sir, do you need more time?
Yes, please. Dr. showers informed us that he would organize the bus tour. It took us along North Huntsville's borders, which are Jordan Lane, Highway fifty-three on the west, Memorial Parkway on the east, University on the south, and Bobway Lane on the north. It took us up to the Toyota plant and we saw property just beyond that that seems to be quite ideal for more industry. We saw retail, the retail quarter of University where it intersects with Memorial Parkway and things that are going on there. Money is being spent in North Huntsville. In fact, Shane Davis informed us that the Starbucks on the corner of West, on Master Lake and Memorial Parkway is making more money than the other Starbucks. North Huntsville has money, it's worth investing in. We're just spending our money at other locations because we don't have in our area that which we could do. We're looking at doing-
Excuse me, sir. Councilmember, do you need more, do you still need more time?
Yes, sir.
How much more time do you need?
Give me about two minutes, if I may.
Councilmembers, that's awful lot, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, up to y'all. Okay. Sir, normally we allow three minutes and we're giving you more time tonight, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So then, there's a lot that can be done by way of strategizing and of course, we are looking at videographing the positive of North Huntsville. I definitely will go to iHeart Huntsville and find out what they're doing because what they're doing is some of the things that we're looking at doing for North Huntsville. We had a GIS map and the map shows the various retail and what have you already existence. We have opportunities to do great things. Briefly about videographing projections, we will look at video highlighting recreational areas, we will look at highlighting available real estate that's for sale, we will look at highlighting the MLK bypass and the property that runs between the northern bypass and then the southern section, the southern section of our borders. We will look at the various businesses, retail areas, we will look at community residents. A young man came to us, our meeting the other day, born and raised in southeast Huntsville and he said that until he moved six years ago to North Huntsville, he thought North Huntsville was all black. We are multiracial, we have the spectrum of the rainbow in North Huntsville. And so we need to highlight these positives. We have community organization, resident community associations of all colors, we have great churches, and we have adjacent attractions such as Low Mills and even the beautiful downtown Huntsville city that all makes North Huntsville worth investing in. So we're inviting the investors, we're inviting the city governance to support North Huntsville. Somebody asked the question, why North Huntsville? Why not? We have the prop, oh, the land and everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You get my point. Why not North Huntsville? Thank you.
Chair, Ms. Jackie Reed. Good evening.
Thank you. I want to thank you for allowing the public to get in by. Have we stopped the prayers and the preachers in the city council meetings? I pray to God that we don't never cut that out. All of us needs to hear that, no matter what, even if there's one sitting out here, please let them say what they need to say. We gotta have that going on in government and everywhere else. So so many good citizens in Huntsville, giving, caring, and loving, and I talk with many of them every day where I work. That's where I get a lot of my information and a lot of you don't understand where I get my information. I heard on the, from, I can't say city employee, you might find them. I don't know their names, but I hear a lot from city employees. I'll never tell a name, never, ever. Anyway, I heard the mayor put out an email last Friday saying my job was done at City Hall and we'd done a good job and I was headed for the Madison City Council meeting and I was going to the county commission meeting. Well, my daughter was in Montgomery when all three of those, Dale Strong, mayor, and Tulock was all down there and Mayor Battle told my daughter, I said, if you run into him again, tell him I already found out about it and got a copy of it before anybody else did. Tell him I already know about it. On the day that had April one, I'm sure that was April fool. But I've been going to these meetings anyway, so tell him, my job is not finished here at City Hall, it's just the beginning. So tell him to hang in there, we're not going anywhere. I really want to bring up the Holiday Inn. I'm not never, ever gonna let that go, that or Butler. Word is he's never gonna hear the life and the end of Butler as long as I live. Mayor Battle's never gonna hear the end of Holiday Inn, Scruggs Center, Aquatic Center, as long as my mouth's open and my eyes are not shut yet. The Holiday Inn, we paid six point eight million, I've told you that a hundred times. It cost no telling how much to clean it up, about three hundred thousand plus. And we're taking the Scruggs Center down, the Aquatic Center, and he's only paying a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year. Somebody stopped me at Bruce Spring Cafe the other day and said, do you know how much that is for ninety-nine years, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year? Now, I'm not good at the computer and calculating, I am when it comes to you all spending money. But he said, that's only fourteen million. What? Ninety-nine years rent? Of course, I know you're gonna get all that taxes back and all that stuff you're gonna sell and put up and all those condos and hope and pray that they fill in every one of them. I predict ten years from now, I won't be here and every one of these condos in the city of Huntsville will be empty. I believe that, somebody keeping an eye on it, I may not be here, but anyway. I understand the post office on Governor's Drive will be closing in June. Do you ever get interested in anything like that going on and trying to stop it in the city? That's just a rumor and that's what I heard.
Ms. Reed, I hate to ask this question, but do you need more time?
You don't, don't even think about it.
Okay.
I'll hurry and try to cover it and make it short and sweet. Boy, tonight, I wish I'd have had my agenda loaded because it was my night. I'm sorry. I'm glad you take more time, they have to give me more time. They don't have to, but it would be smart if they did.
Let's give her another minute.
Anyway, I know the firefighters is up for a raise. I never have a problem with any firefighter or any police officer getting any raise, any raise or any kind of money. They're not paid enough anyway, in my personal opinion. But I would like to tell the public out here, respect those badges, those guns, and those police officers. Say yes, sir, when they're talking to you. Every person's got a different personality. Don't run, don't yell, and don't disrespect the police officers if you don't want to get shot. And I'll tell the young, young police officers, handle them with respect to the point that you have to, please. We don't want police officers across this whole nation having a bad name. We gotta stop that mess. I just, I just think that that's something we need to look into. I'd like for you to hold fifteen K, M, O, and P and explain it. Try to explain it to all of us, okay? And this deal with Cabela, we need to get some of that money back. I hear that lawsuit's gonna be pretty hot and pretty heavy. That's not the only deal that's ever crossed these council chambers. That one just got caught up with, somebody stopped that and blocked that. So quit wasting taxpayers' dollars. I know you're fixing to go buy a whole lot more land. I wish, I pray, that when you buy this land and you're making deals and whales out here, why don't you tell the public how much you're paying it, how it just kind of costs and fill us in just a little more than what you're doing on here. We run through these things and we don't know nothing about it till we read it in the paper. We don't hear everything. Thank you for all the time, have a good weekend, and I do love you. I was told not to tell you that, but I'm going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Jones? Mr. Jones, if you'll give an address for the record, please.
Steve, Steve Jones, twenty-six oh six Ardy Street. Good evening. The Huntsville firefighters are in attendance this evening with the intention of observing our council vote on the parity ordinance. But instead, we are here tonight with great frustration and disappointment as the mayor's office has initiated yet another hurdle to defeat the parity ordinance that the Huntsville firefighters are seeking. We are also frustrated that members of the council have agreed to delay this vote even further. As you know, we began this process by presenting the parity plan to you and the mayor ten months ago. It was set to be introduced in October, but at the last minute, the mayor asked for a work session. We waited patiently for six months for that work session to take place. At that work session, we presented factual information that undoubtedly argues the legitimacy of our request. The mayor's final answer in response to this work session was that there is a reclassification process in place. We're fully aware of the reclassification process and we welcome those at any time, but that process does not meet the criteria of our request. We are seeking a base wage parity ordinance for firefighters and police. The reclassification process the mayor suggested must begin with a request by the department head or an employee of that department. Since that is not what we are seeking, no employees of this department have requested one. Our department head, Chief McFarland, requested an audit, requested an audit only after he was ordered to by the mayor. This is an obvious attempt by the mayor to delay the vote of our ordinance and is also an undeniable misuse of authority. In addition, the audit request that he ordered the department head to initiate only covered two of the four positions that the parity ordinance names to achieve true departmental parity across the board. For the sake of fair analysis by us, we have reviewed the audit form that we were presented after it was initiated. This form is dated nineteen eighty-eight and was originated by Gary Kramer and Associates, who was an outside firm hired by the city when Steve Hettinger was mayor for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That sum would obviously be much larger today to have a similar audit completed by an impartial outside agency, but the city is not using an outside source. The mayor is attempting to conduct an in-house audit. This audit is to be overseen by another department head of this city. Are we likely to get an impartial and fair audit, especially considering the heavy-handed and inappropriate demands made by our mayor to our own department head? Does this city's HR department have the certifications or credentials required in this type of proceeding? We do know that in nineteen eighty-eight, the mayor's office decided to spend nearly a quarter of a million dollars for this type of service.
Mr. Jones, do you need more time?
Yes, please. They obviously had reason to believe that it was worth spending the money to receive a true impartial decision. It strikes me as odd that Mayor Battle believes that is it acceptable to use our own HR department, but our own HR department is still using the forms supplied by an outside contractor that is no longer in business. So who has trained HR? If the mayor was here tonight, we would ask, why are you going to such extreme and unfair efforts to eliminate this parity ordinance? We believe that budgetary concerns do not hold enough cause to continue delaying this ordinance in the way that he has. The ordinance implements the wage increase over a three-year period. During our inquiries and investigations, we have not been shown a single budgetary reason why this ordinance cannot be employed, especially considering the size of our city's budget and the increased tax revenues that this city has been blessed to see. In every media outlet that has featured something about the base wage parity for firefighters and police, your constituents have been overwhelmingly in support for parity. Fire department personnel have been to many emergency scenes and spoken to police officers on those scenes who have also expressed- on those scenes who have also expressed their support for this ordinance. We asked the mayor and the city council, why is this being delayed further? The mayor's answer to us has been that we have an internal audit plan in place. Based on the reasons discussed earlier, that plan is obviously not acceptable. It is also astounding that the mayor is fighting this hard to delay an ordinance that the public so strongly supports. Mayor and council members, with great frustration and annoyance, we once again are asked to wait out another delay. And we once again ask for your diligent attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor TC Johnson?
TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkman Drive. Just as I left home, I was watching the situation in South Carolina. I listened to the mother of police officer who shot. I listened to the family of the gentleman that was killed. Families are devastated on both sides. I listened to the history of the officer, which states he was a good officer. They are talking about now moving body cams. This has happened in every situation. And one of the thing I want to ask our progressive Huntsville, since these body cams are believed to be a deterrent or whatever to these kinds of incidents occurring, are we gonna wait to that happens to us before we think about body cams? Or are we gonna be the progressive city that we say we are and go ahead and start thinking about and making plans for body cams now? If they can deter it from happening, we ought to have them before they happen. And I'd ask our leaders to think about, we have sharp communication, sharp guy, Rex is over there working for him, we can get this done. We are the Rocket City. And every life is important. I don't think you can have a value on a life. But our reputation globally and in this nation is a high reputation. Those incidents are bringing the reputation of those cities to a low place, not just nationally, but the Taliban are using those to throw up in our face how jacked up we are as a people. That was one. And so I'd ask you to think about that. And, and let me just add this, as often as African Americans are being ticketed in this city with just one traffic stop from it happening right here. Another question that I want to ask, I, I noticed the Hall incident with the officer was trying to bribe for, to get some crook off the hook or something like that. The FBI was called in. But a couple of years ago, two officers who were turned in by fellow officers for drugs, weapon, unmarked weapon, all kinds of things. One was found guilty. Of course, the city wouldn't try that officer again. And I'm not gonna call any names, but I have them right here before me, have the incident before me as well. No FBI had been called in to investigate crimes that, or situations that white officers get involved. Why, why are we treating black officers differently? We could have handled that in this city like we handle white officers. The only difference in the cases is these officers were black. They committed a crime. We called in FBI. We didn't call in FBI in the cases with the white officers. They were dealing with drug. They were, they were bribing. They were, they were playing drugs on citizens. There's a lawsuit still at large on that, but one of those particular cases. It looks like the only difference now, again, we don't want to look that way, but it's black and white. Can I have one more minute?
Sure.
That case is causing division within the force because other officers was, names were called, those, some of those black officers have been moved, and now there's a black-white situation going on in the police department. And anytime that happens, we're in a critical state. Leadership has to take a stand right now, right now. This now, this is multiple sources. In one case, officers are following other officers in the city as though they are criminals. That, that's unheard of. That's unfair. It goes back to this old idea that if one black does it, all of them do it. A stereotype. And I, I, I've applauded chief. I've talked to chief about this matter with an officer before. It's getting worse, and so I come to you all, look into it. Let's fix it. We're better than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
Uh, there was a gentleman, I believe lives on Hood Road, who I, I believe wanted to speak to the council, and I think this was his first time. He didn't know that he had to sign in. Could we suspend the rules this one time since he's a first-time visitor?
Sir, is there someone that wishes to speak to us?
Yeah. And again, it's because he had not been here before, and I don't believe he knew that he was supposed to, to sign in to speak.
Sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Tyler Eric Trude. I live at 2720 Hood Road. Uh, Mr. Kling, I have spoken to you all about this matter before. We were hoping to speak with you privately in your office if you have time later tonight.
Okay, yeah, I'm certainly available for you.
Mr. Culver?
Yes. Is the chief of police here or someone from his department? Good afternoon, chief.
Yes, sir.
And this is just kind of a follow-up to what Pastor TC Johnson has requested. Uh, do we have, and, and not to put you on the spot, you can always send that information, not just to me, but maybe the mayor and the council, but do we have any information on what it would cost for body cams?
Uh, well, we have, uh, the, the, we have been in researching the project. They run about 400 to 480 dollars apiece, depending on the model that you get. There are 300 or 322 police officers that are on the street. And then in addition to that, you have to pay to store the video. Uh, you have to require a server in the backend of it. Uh, it's a pretty substantial investment.
Are there any federal grants or funding or state funding that may be available to help us out a little bit?
Uh, there are justice department grants. They're burn, what they call Edward J. Burn Grants.
Okay.
Uh, as far as some specific video grants, there are some out there, but smaller departments and, and, uh, have, have gotten those. Huntsville's a mid-sized department. They would, they, federal grants in those areas tend to focus on smaller departments or sheriff's departments in rural areas.
And, and I know that we are spending money for other things that we've already committed for, but, and I want law enforcement officers to understand, having been one myself, I wish we had had body cams back then. I probably wouldn't have ended up in Internal Affairs Office as much as I did, because those cameras are designed to both protect the general public and the officer. Uh, so I guess what I'm getting at is at some point in time, for a city like Huntsville, that is a high-tech city, uh, we are the trendsetters, and, uh, we perhaps should be on the forefront of that. Um, I would, I would like if you could delve into that a little further and, and maybe come back with a plan, even if it were to be that we do it in increments. You know, depending on the cost for the camera, the storage, and other related training, maybe we could start out with, uh, you know, a third of the department, you know? Maybe we could work it in phases. Certain number for six months, the next six months, maybe we could, you know, mid-year budget, add X amount of additional officers with cameras, that, that kind of thing. But I, I kinda feel like, while I believe that our police officers are impeccable police officers, um, I, I just think that, that camera system could, could certainly help us, uh, our community and our residents and law enforcement, uh, you know, by having something that we can go back and see again. And I, and I say this to my fellow officers, that if I were working the street, I would be the first one to say, "I'll wear one voluntarily," um, because of what it, it offers.
Uh, well, all, all of our patrol cars, the, the large majority of patrol force, shift patrol officers have car cameras, have, have cameras in their cars. Traffic stops are recorded, events are recorded that happen in the cars. Uh, we review the videos constantly, and we've actually presented some of the videos, uh, as evidence in disciplinary actions and, uh, but we, we capture a lot of video. It's not like we don't capture any video at all. Uh, there's, there's, uh, positives and negatives to both sides, but it's something we're looking at, and, and we'll, we'll look into it.
Okay.
Mr. Culver or Mr., Mr. President?
Hold one second. Are you finished, Mr. Culver?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Joffreyon?
I just wanted to respond briefly, Mr. Culver. At, at first blush, it seems like a no-brainer, um, uh, to, to progress towards that end, and it, and it, and it may be where the city needs to head. Um, I would urge some caution in jumping into that immediately. There are significant issues with regard to durability and reliability of body cameras versus the cameras that are used in the patrol cars. Um, it's been a wonderful benefit to have them in the patrol cars. Uh, we don't have quite the reliability and the durability that we do with body cameras now, and, and they may get there, but right now, I don't think it is there, and, and we, we need to be very careful about jumping into it before we're sure that, that the technology and the, the quality of the equipment is, is good.
Well, and I certainly appreciate you, Mr. Joffreyon, for that information. Um, and we know that technology improves with time, but by the time we figure out how to pay for it, it's, it's gonna be a minute anyway. So I, I, I would just like for us to just start looking at that, and, and if you're, you and your staff can keep us, you know, abreast of the pros and cons for it, I'm not saying as a replacement to what we already have. I'm saying in addition to, so that we'll be covered even better than some of those places that only have body cams. So I'd like for us, when it's practicable, uh, as soon as practicable or feasible, to maybe just entertain it, um, from this point. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. We have no Huntsville utility items. We do have board appointments to be voted on. We have a resolution to appoint William Tommynello to the Bingo Review Committee for a term to expire April 8, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to reappoint James Bailey to the Bingo Review Committee for a term to expire April 8, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Fred Roddree to the Bingo Review Committee for a term to expire April 8, 2017. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to appoint Gail Bestlock to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October 1, 2017. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to appoint Patricia King to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a term to expire February 14, 2018.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, or second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have several board appointment nominations. We have a nomination to reappoint Betsy Lowe to the Museum Board for a term to expire May 9, 2021, made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination to reappoint Mike Seggers to the Industrial Development Board for a term to expire May 27, 2021, also made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination to reappoint Richard Crunkleton to the Museum Board for a term to expire May 9, 2021, made by the chair. We have a nomination to reappoint Hunley Bat Senior to the Industrial Development Board for a term to expire May 27, 2021, made by Dr. Showers. Are there other nominations?
Yes, I move to reappoint Mace Neal to the Bingo Review Committee for a new term to expire 4/8/2017.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Robinson?
I move to appoint Dr. Amit Aurora to the Healthcare Authority Place 8 for a six-year term to expire 4/12/21.
Thank you. The chair moves to reappoint Mike Goodman to the Healthcare Authority Place 7 for a six-year term to expire 4/12/21. I move to reappoint Nathaniel Hudson to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a new three-year term expiring April 14, 2018. I move to reappoint Deidre Campbell Edwards to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a new three-year term expiring April 14, 2018. And I move to reappoint Alex Adams to the Community Development Citizens Advisory Council for a new three-year term expiring April 14, 14, 2018.
Surprised at that.
Ms. Kling.
Uh, I had a question. I don't know if this would be for you or Mr. Joffreyon. Um, do the healthcare authority positions, are they actually nominated, or do we actually receive a nomination from the board, and could we act on them if we wanted?
The healthcare authority submits three names to the city council, and the city council is, is required under state law to select from among those three. That's, that's how it's set up under the enabling legislation.
Do we need to do nominations, or can we take motions tonight?
This is, in, in practice, this is traditionally the way we've done it, is nominated and then voted. No, sir, but if the council want to waive that, we can waive it. It's up to the council members.
Is there a reason to do so? I mean, to, to vote on it tonight?
No, I just thought it was one of those legal technicality things that we had from the hospital board.
No, our practice has been to do it this way. Are there any other, are there other nominations, Dr. Showers?
Yes, I, I move to nominate Dr. Leon Lewis, Place 8, Huntsville Hospital Authority.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
Okay, I had another question, I guess, to throw to Mr. Joffreyon. We have, we received by letter, uh, three names for one position, three names for a second position. Can we co-mingle where if we wanted to, we could take two names out of one list of three, or do they have to stay separate?
Has to stay separate.
Any other nominations? Moving on, 10 is approval of expenditures, 10 A is a resolution of recognizing expenditures for payment. Dr. Showers?
Mr. President, I would move tonight that we would, uh, expand 6,288,615 and 71 cents.
Sir, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. We have a motion by Dr. Showers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. Showers, do you have a finance committee report?
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Council members, I can give you a couple of items tonight. First, our sales tax figures for March. We were, uh, those figures came in just a couple of days ago. We were 0.8% down in March compared to March a year ago. Uh, our number for the year, which is now six months halfway through the year, is at 3.8% more than, uh, last year. Our budget requirement is three. Um, so we'll give you a full report on everything else, revenues and expenditures during our mid-year review, whenever that's scheduled sometime in the next 30 days. Uh, the second item I can report to you is an update on the city's debt issuance plans. Uh, last meeting, I told you what our plans were to be pricing in the marketplace. Uh, by this time, we did that last week on two different days. Uh, the first day, we priced, uh, a very small piece of our debt, which was about 8 million dollars. That's the money that we're required, um, if you will, to borrow to pay off some of the EUL debt, that properties are now paying property taxes out there. And under the agreement that we have with the developers is once they actually build the buildings they committed to build and those get on the tax rolls, that the city then has the confidence that we can borrow the money and pay off that debt. So that's 8 million dollars worth of debt. We did price that on Tuesday, and we, uh, were pleased with the way that went. It's not, uh, exactly what we were expecting, but the market was a little bit, uh, it can be that way on any given day. So we did price that debt and made a commitment, the mayor signed the agreement. You will be asked on April the 23rd, the next meeting, to actually ratify that, approve it. So the debt's not been issued. It's just been, uh, signed as tentative. Uh, the other part, the much larger part for our capital programs, which includes roads, uh, parks and so forth, that we priced on Wednesday. As I reported to each of you by email, we were not satisfied with the results. It would have caused Huntsville to have, uh, paid more interest than we think our name is worth, all things considered on that particular day, so we backed away from that, and we were preparing to go back to the market. Last week was a difficult week, Wednesday in particular, being April the 1st, um, with respect to the end of a quarter. Uh, unemployment report came out Friday, lots of other market-driven things. Uh, that was not the best week, and so we're looking right now to do that again on Tuesday of the following week. So, uh, hopefully we'll have all of this, uh, arranged and in the city's best interest for you to hear and approve on April the 23rd. Uh, but again, we're not gonna do it until it's in the city's best interest, so, but you will have the 8 million coming to you at the next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. We're communicators for the mayor. Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd ask that, uh, the council consider the resolution, uh, you mentioned earlier, uh, appointing, uh, Mr. Steve Ivey as our Director of Parks and Recreation?
Okay, the resolution says, "Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, that the appointment of Steve Ivey to the position of Director of Parks and Recreation is hereby approved at the salary rate of grade 21, step 16, effective March 12, 2015."
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Go ahead, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you. Also, uh, I think it's important to note, I, in my role as the city administrator, and I now coming up here in a few months to my two-year anniversary. and now coming up here in a few months to my two-year anniversary, I've had the opportunity to engage with and observe our employees on a daily basis. And Captain Jones from our Fire Department is one of those employees who, he, along with the rest of his fellow firefighters, we have the utmost confidence in their capabilities to serve the public in the role that they've been given. I've also never seen a situation where I needed to question his integrity. That's equally true for the other employees. I have the opportunity on a daily basis to observe the work of Byron Thomas and the other employees in Human Resources, and have never seen a need to question their integrity. I have the utmost confidence in their ability to do their jobs, do it professionally, and do it with integrity. We also have, I think, in the city, a very strong personnel handbook that lays out very specific procedures on how all of our employees, 100% of the employees across every department, will be treated as it relates to administrative matters. And many of those matters come to the City Council for consideration. Job audits and reclassification is one of those actions that you play an important role in, and you routinely vote on those. And I trust that the folks that bring that to you do it with integrity, and I trust that you consider it and vote on it with integrity. And where we are today with conducting job audits across a great many positions, there are a number of job audits that are currently occurring, being conducted by the Human Resource Department, and they're all being done following the exact same procedures by the same people who are well-trained, have done it for many years, and have resulted in great decisions relative to the classification of all of our employees, not just a single department. Thank you. I'll also have some events I'd like to announce on behalf of the mayor. Tomorrow, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., rain or shine, Operation Green Team is having a supply pickup for the Great American Cleanup Beautification Day. And that day will occur on April 11th. So come by City Hall and get the supplies you need to help keep the city clean. There will also be a drawing for a cedar raised planter. So come get your name and the hat for that. Also, on Saturday, April 11th, Public Safety Day at Grissom High School, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., you get to meet the South Precinct Officers, get information on cybersecurity issues, Community Watch and other information. Also, one of the things that they'll hit on is child car seat restraints. Operation Green Team will also sponsor Earth Day activities out at Hayes Nature Preserve on Saturday, April 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There'll be more than 70 earth-friendly exhibitors and vendors. They will have exhibits and demonstrations. The bird hiking with John, I'm sure I'll mispronounce his name, Hinger, begins at 8:00 a.m. Is that pretty close? All right. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Hamilton, but could you clarify something for me as it relates to the firefighters and the audit? Are we doing all four positions that they have requested? Not just the entry-level firefighter and the driver, but the district chief and captain position?
The audit that is ongoing right now is the firefighter and the driver positions. And the thought process behind that is, once we see the result of that, the entire grade structure within a department is generally driven from the bottom up. So if we see, based on this audit, the need to reclassify those positions, that will then immediately trigger a review of the other positions to ensure that we maintain the appropriate grade structure from position to position as you move up through the chain of command. So I don't expect that this audit will be the end of the process. But given the volume of jobs associated with this one, given the workload associated with doing it, recommendation from HR professionals is best first to hit those two positions. If we see changes, then that will automatically cascade up through the chain of command.
What are we looking at in a timeframe? I know that you can't give me a definite date, but just an approximate date to complete the process?
You know, I've gone through that with Mr. Thomas, and I'll tell you that audits generally take from three to six months. There are sometimes ones that are more complex, but that's, you know, the vast majority fall somewhere within that time range. The process is already started. In fact, we've twice received requests from the employees that the process, once the department had requested and the process initiated, it starts at the employee level where they provide input, an explanation into what is it they do, how they do it, and the factors that drive the results of the audit. They have twice requested extensions on the time period they have to provide that input. We've granted both of those extensions. So right now, that process is ongoing, developing the employee input into the process, and then their input works its way up through the chain of command ultimately. Once the department head certifies that, it goes to HR for them to input that into their review process. They'll conduct interviews. There'll be quite a few of the employees that'll be interviewed by HR to essentially validate the inputs, get a better understanding of the inputs, be able to fill in any gaps that may exist in the information, and then ultimately complete the audit process. So my expectation is, from today, we're probably 60 to 90 days away. But we'll be able, as once we get that completed employee input and begins working its way up the chain of command, we'll be able to get better fidelity on some target dates.
And you said that the Fire Department requested two extensions on that. Is that wrong?
They did, from the employees. In fact, the Firefighter Association is who submitted that request on behalf of the employees, and we granted both of those.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And a couple of other things, Mr. President, if I may. I think the stage has been set for us to take just a few more minutes. So I'm going to take advantage of that. I would like to thank all of the department heads. I see Byron Thomas, oops, I never should have started calling names. Mr. Hatfield, Terry Hatfield, Joey McKee, and Kenny Anderson. I see Nicole Jones back there. She's not a city department head, but she was there to help us out as well. And Fire Chief McFarland, and Dan Sanders, and just a bunch of support personnel and other department heads. Chief Louis Morris had the Deputy Chief and the Captain McMurray and some of the other officers, resource officers at that meeting. And we're still doing follow-up. We haven't forgotten about Old Cobblestone. In fact, I got a communications from Miss Laberty today that I'm going to do some follow-up with. So I thank you all for coming out and helping our community with that. And to Mayor Battle in his absence, thank you, sir. A couple of things. Want to send a shout-out to our inmate labor supervisors. They are, as always, doing an incredible job with using our inmate labor, which is free labor, to keep our city beautiful. And I know, Ms. McKee, you can certainly appreciate that because it helps out, maybe, your green team in the efforts to keep Huntsville clean. So we certainly thank them for that. I was in Montgomery this week and had the occasion to meet with Governor Bentley again, our organization, the chamber trip to Montgomery. I didn't put him back on the spot, but I did ask Mr. Cooper for monies as it relates to road money for '72 to widen that from Providence all the way to County Line. I feel pretty certain that with the help of our local legislative delegation, that we are going to get those monies back in the budget. Also, I'm happy to announce that, maybe I shouldn't announce this, but I'm just really excited about it. But there's going to be some interesting activity at County Line Road and Interstate I-565 on the 17th. So I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I believe it's going to happen at 10:00 in the morning. And it's going to be a great day for all of our residents who live west of Huntsville, and those not only in Madison City, but beyond Decatur and Limestone County and other areas are truly going to benefit by what is going to happen on that day. So I'm not going to say anymore about it. I'm just going to put that out there and leave it. I believe that is all I have for today. And one other thing, Dr. Showers, I certainly applaud you for the efforts that you are making in District 1. I know that you and Dr. Robinson here have been not only collaborating, but corroborating. I tell my students, you can corroborate before the exam, but no collaboration. But you all have been doing both. And I want to say to you, public, both of you, that whatever we can do, District 5 can do to help District 1, because District 1 runs parallel with District 5. What happens in District 1 directly impacts District 5. And District 3, Dr. Robinson, your district, I commend you on what you're doing. And I know that Dr. Johnson gave you the idea to do that, but we appreciate you doing that. And likewise, and the reason I say this to you, Dr. Robinson, is because you are truly not only representing District 3 well, but you're representing our entire city well. And whatever I can do in my capacity as council member in District 5 to help District 3 and to help District 1, I am committed to that. Now, before you all get all upset, Mr. President and Mr. Kling, likewise, whatever we can do to help in those areas, we are certainly open and receptive. But I'm just amazed at how District 1 and District 3 are both working in conjunction with each other. So my hat's off to you. And thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair, Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we're five districts, but we're one city as a whole. This weekend, I'm going to have to put on my track shoes because there are a lot of things that are taking place. And I think Joy McKee probably started everything when she does her cleanup process. I'm going to be attending a neighborhood cleanup at Merrimack Mill Village Saturday morning at 9:00. After that, I'm going to be zipping over to Tryna Village. The neighborhood is having a yard sale over there. And I'm looking forward to visiting with some good friends over there and some great activity that's been taking place over there. 10:30, several of us are going to be going out to the different ballfields. And the Continental League is going to be having their opening at Bryan Springs Park Saturday morning at 10:30. I'm looking forward to getting out to that. And that afternoon, Asha Karan is going to be having their annual celebration going on. And I'm looking forward to going out to visit out there. Want to, I guess, wave a flag to the folks at Madison Heights. They have been dealing with some speeding traffic issues and cut-through issues because they're located between Huntsville High School and Governor's Drive. We do have the city staff looking at the traffic counts and the speed hump situation to see if some speed humps could be put in to help, and also some resurfacing over on Swanee Road. So those are some issues that we're working on that hopefully will have a good outcome. Wanted to ask if Chief Morris, is he still here? Well, maybe he's...
He's coming.
I hear him coming down. Chief, at the last meeting, and I believe this would come under your purview, maybe it's a different department, but we had a citizen that talked to us about the problems of tailgating on the streets taking place where one car closely follows another car. I think he mentioned specifically University Drive was one of the bad areas. Is there anything that the Police Department can do? I know council members got a copy of the ordinance that's on the books. I think a copy was also forwarded to the gentleman, Mr. Peters. But is there any enforcement or any activity that the Police Department could do concerning that situation?
Well, we take enforcement action on violations of that nature. When we see them, it's actually following too closely. The difficulty in that is, is there's a lot of bumper-to-bumper traffic in heavy traffic areas, in heavy traffic on University Drive as there is on the Parkway when you get off the overpasses. So, I mean, the question is, is it really fair to write somebody for falling too closely when they're bumper-to-bumper traffic? When officers see somebody traveling at a rate of speed and they're actually too close or tailgating or following, or sometimes they even tailgate a police car, they take enforcement action. But it's something that when we see it and they can determine that's what it is and we're able to enforce it, we'll take a...
It looks like it would be a traffic safety issue. Maybe it's not, you know, something that the Police Department can actually focus. But I just wonder, maybe if there's some sort of public information campaign that could be done to encourage people to, you know, put more space, you know, in between other cars? Because somebody puts their feet on the brakes and whammo. Next thing you know, you've got a fender bender or even worse.
It is. It's a cause of accidents. It's generally, they're either falling too closely or inattention, which goes along with no texting and driving. And, you know, if you're driving down University Drive and you get up around Research Park Boulevard and you're going west during rush hour traffic, if you leave enough space between the two cars in front of you, it won't be there long, because somebody's going to merge over in that lane with you. So it's up to each individual driver to maintain a safe distance. But when we see the violations and are able to enforce it, we will.
Okay. I may see if there's something that could be done with public information or something about...
We use the message boards that we have quite often in neighborhoods to generally remind people about speeding issues. We can schedule setting some boards up about to remember not to follow too closely. And we could possibly do some PSAs.
Okay. Thanks for whatever you can do. And I guess one other thing I want to mention, take a, you know, kudos to the Citywide Community Watch Group. Last Monday, I was at their meeting that they had at the JC Building. And Chief, between the Police Department, the Community Watch Association, it's just a great communication, working relationship. And that's one of those positives where we have neighborhoods, Community Watch Groups, and the Police Department working well together. You've got some good folks in that department doing that.
Oh, we appreciate it. It's a very valuable asset to the Police Department and the city as a whole. We have a strong relationship.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. Culver, you had one more thing to add?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. And I do apologize to the department heads. Kathy Martin with Engineering, we certainly thank you. And John Hamilton, as always, thank you so kindly for your help and the contributions that you have made to our city. And Mr. Haygood, who very seldom shows up to Town Hall meetings, but we had a special issue relating to voting. So we're in the process of resolving that. So residents who live in that area will be able to come closer into the city. And Mr. Binion, I don't think I called his name earlier. Thank you, sir, for coming out and helping us. And is there anybody on that wall over there that I overlooked?
Is anybody left?
I mean, they came out in groves. And, you know, that's the problem when you're relying just on your head. But if I've missed anybody, attribute it to my head and not my heart because I certainly appreciate all of you for what you do, not just coming out to Town Hall meetings, but what you do all day, every day. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am delighted to announce that the North Huntsville Business Association had an event on Wednesday. We were able to drive through North Huntsville. I want to thank Dr. Johnson, who was here tonight, who has been facilitating activities with this particular group. More than that, I want to thank the officials from the city who were accompanying us on that trip. Shane Davis, Ken Binion, persons from the Planning Department, Engineering Department, we had media there, Huntsville Times, Chamber of Commerce, and certain of the members of the North Huntsville Business Association, insurance reps. I want to thank Tommy Brown. I don't know if he's here tonight, but he supplied the transportation. We left at 1:00, got back about 3:30. And we're just blessed to have this type of partnership in our city. Thanks so much for that. I do want to let the public know that I attended a Community Watch meeting at Lakewood Baptist Church. Church. The second annual Friday night under the lights at Alabama A&amp;M University Lewis Cruz Stadium reception, and to see the team practice on Friday night. Dr. Jared Crutcher will be having his fortieth pastoral appreciation at the North Hall. On Saturday, I will be attending, at ten fifteen, the Northern League's opening, and that's at Stoner Field. The seventeenth annual Junior Courtierian Ball will be held, and of course, I will be attending that particular event. The Huntsville-Madison County Hall of Fame induction banquet, that's Monday. Will be attending that. Also, on Tuesday of next week, I will be speaking at the Cohort Two. It is a new leadership training program dealing with politics and government. That meeting will be held at St. Luke Baptist Church, where the Reverend Dr. T.C. Johnson is pastor there. The fortieth anniversary celebration of our person that was just here earlier at the VBC, celebrating the fortieth year of VBC. That will be done this weekend. There is a renowned gentleman that's going to be in town this weekend, in fact, tomorrow. That's Houston Person. He is a jazz master. He's going to be conducting a free clinic that is open to young and old that are taking learning seriously, should attend this particular function. This announcement was submitted by Howard Bankhead. He is the director of the Tennessee Valley Jazz Society Youth Life Development, asking all those that are interested to come to this free clinic, to come to Alabama A&amp;M University Mars Fine Art Building. This clinic is free to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
I want to begin by congratulating Councilman Showers and his team on really doing some remarkable things for North Huntsville. I'd forgotten that it was just seven weeks ago that we met to have that brainstorming session, and y'all listened and did some really, really, have done some really remarkable things. I look forward to continuing to work with you in the future and see even better things happen. It's time, I'm going to steal a line from my friend, Commissioner Phil Riddick, it's time for North Huntsville and South Huntsville to stop competing with each other, because we've got to work together to compete against Charlotte and San Diego and Austin and every place, and Northern Virginia. That's really what our future depends on. So, I look forward to continuing that work. Lots of exciting things going on. As Mr. Hamilton mentioned, April eleventh is Safety Day. I really commend Huntsville South for putting this together. The workshops that are going to take place that day are going to be valuable with really, really great presenters. So, a great day there. April fourteenth will be the next meeting of the South Huntsville Business Association. We will be meeting at three o'clock at Boulevard South. Look forward to having the mayor attend that meeting. And we're going to be talking, again, it's going to be a brainstorming session about the South Parkway and what we can do to spur some economic development, deal with blight that has plagued all of us. April fifteenth, it's going to be a really busy week. So, on the fourteenth, we have a business association meeting. On the fifteenth, at six o'clock, we will be having an open house for the community. Big Picture will be hosting to unveil the long-range plan for Ditto. Last summer, a meeting, a Big Picture meeting was held, got lots of feedback from the community about what they want to see at Ditto. This will be the unveiling of that plan, which will really turn it into a recreation destination. It's a great partnership between the Ditto Authority, the city, and the county to create a destination for all of us. This isn't just a South Huntsville project. This is going to be for everybody, and it's going to be a really, really exciting plan that's going to be laid forward. That plan will be explored in greater depth at a work session the next day on April sixteenth, and we'll look forward to seeing how all of it's laid out, the timelines, and how we can make this plan a reality. This week and last week, we followed the model of the South Huntsville Business Association by creating another group in South Huntsville. Dr. Showers, you may want to listen to this. We can work together, another project we can work on. We've created, we're calling it Enhanced South Huntsville. It's simply, just like we did with the business association, we're getting residents together to take ownership of the community and to work together. We're going to just start with a very simple cleanup day on May second. It's going to be for all the neighborhoods in South Huntsville getting together. Many thanks to Joy McKee for joining us for the first meeting, and she worked with us yesterday to put everything together. We're going to need neighborhood captains and volunteers to make that happen. Anybody who wants more information on that or wants to volunteer can certainly contact me. We're going to do a similar cleanup day at Ditto the first Saturday in June, June sixth. We're going to do another one in the fall. It's going to be an ongoing effort to continue to beautify South Huntsville, to enhance the opportunities there, to create events that will bring people to South Huntsville and that will build on our leverages. We're going to get the South Huntsville Business Association involved, because it's not just about cleaning up neighborhoods, but about cleaning up businesses as well. So, Joy's actually going to come and talk to the business association about that. And again, many thanks to her and to Green Team for the incredible work that they do. They're going to do a citywide cleanup this Saturday, and then we're going to recruit her to help us with this really focused cleanup on May second. Again, we invite everyone to join us for that. I want to add a little bit to what Councilman Culver said with regard to thanking the employees. I've had the occasion over the last couple of weeks to have some issues that have come up, constituent concerns, and I continue to be impressed with how incredibly responsive our employees are, our department heads, and how committed to customer service. There have been a number of situations where I've seen employees go above and beyond what they had to do, and it has really, really been impressive. Finally, last thing to announce is April thirtieth is going to be the second town hall meeting. I'm committed to doing these quarterly, and this will be the second one. It will be at six thirty at the Bailey Cove Library, and all are invited to come.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We have no... Doc Showers?
Just forgot to mention, and I would be remiss if I would not, but Kenny Anderson, my friend, came to our meeting to talk about civic associations and the relationship of those associations to our city in general. And I would just want to say thank you, Kenny, for sharing again with us in our setting, talking about the relationship between civic association, community, and the city at large. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair. Thirteen unfinished business items for action. We have none. We have no business items for introduction, no new business items for introduction. Fifteen is new business items for consideration or action. Keep in mind, fifteen A has been deleted. The chair holds fifteen K, fifteen M, fifteen N, fifteen O, fifteen P, fifteen Q, fifteen T, and fifteen X. Are there any other items you'd like to hold?
Yes, Mr. President, have R held?
Hold R. Are there any other items?
I and J. Sorry, I and J.
Hold I and J. Anything else? Fifteen B is request to advertise and fill one emergency management officer position a higher step than minimum if necessary. C is ordinance to amend budget ordinance number fourteen dash six-six-five by changing appropriating funding within various departments and funds. D is ordinance to amend budget ordinance number fourteen dash six-six-five by changing the authorized personnel strength within various departments. E is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. F is a resolution to classify the fund balance of the general fund consistent with requirements of state law, city ordinances, and resolutions and accounting standards as of October first, two thousand and fourteen. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement with the low bidder, meaning specifications outlined in attached summary of bids acceptance. H is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a special employment agreement between the city of Huntsville and Martha Winkles. L is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Alabama Department of Transportation for the cooperative maintenance of public right-of-way. S is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South letter of credit number three-six-two-zero-zero-eight-zero-eight-six-six-one for Stratford McMullen Cove subdivision. U is a request for authorization to fill public safety dispatcher position to provide for authorized strength. V is a request for authorization to fill firefighter position to provide for authorized strength. W is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the city of Huntsville and Defense Acquisition University, South Region, for faculty and faculty use in support of the mayor's advanced leadership development program. The chair moves for consolidation approval of fifteen B through H, fifteen L, fifteen S, fifteen U, V, and W. We have a motion for consolidation approval by the chair, a second by Dr. Showers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at fifteen aye. Fifteen aye is resolution authorizing mayor to agreement for transportation alternative project between the state of Alabama and the city of Huntsville regarding project number TAPHV TA fourteen nine fifty-two Aldridge Creek Greenway Extension. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, a second by Dr. Robinson. Mr. Madison, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is an extension to the existing Aldridge Creek Greenway. This is through the state TAP program. It's a pass-through. The state provides eighty percent of the construction funds. We match with twenty percent, looking at roughly an estimated construction cost of just over a million dollars. Our twenty percent match would be just over two hundred thousand dollars.
And that greenway extension will go from...
Yeah, you've got, I know it's a little bit of a stretch. It's Bailey Cove, basically it stubs out into Bailey Cove just south of Weatherly. What we're going to do is expand the greenway along Bailey Cove and the sidewalk right-of-way up to Weatherly, cross Weatherly, go along the northern edge until we cross the bridge, and then we can drop back down into Aldridge Creek.
And right before the golf course?
And right before the golf course. I think it's Esslinger.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement for a transportation alternative project between the state of Alabama and the city of Huntsville regarding project number TAPHV TA fourteen EUL bike and pedestrian corridor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Mr. Madison?
Yeah, this is the same state program, slightly smaller scale. We're looking at a construction cost of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, city match of about twenty-three thousand. For mapping purposes, basically this starts at the elbow of Governor's West, not far from the Cabela site, drops down into a culvert. There is an old railroad spur that actually goes under five sixty-five that's already existing. Basically, this is finishing out a trail, so you can go from Governor's West all the way to EUL underneath the highway.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. K is a resolution authorizing memorandum of agreement by and between the city of Huntsville and Randy Scrimshaw, owner of the Times Building located at two twenty-eight East Holmes Avenue, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-oh-one, in order to provide network connectivity in Veterans Memorial Park for security purposes. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Sir, you'll...
Wayne Brooks, ITS Department.
Mr. Brooks, welcome.
Thank you. We've had security issues at the Veterans Park. For that reason, security cameras are being installed. There is no network connection that we can use to view those cameras. This will provide that network connection between the Veterans Park and city network.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Brooks?
Is there any cost associated with this?
Not with this memo of understanding. The radio equipment will cost us money to install that, but there's no cost with this memo of understanding.
So, Mr. Scrimshaw basically is just permitting us to use his building?
That's correct.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the city of Huntsville and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for a right-of-way permit agreement for Greenbrier Road, project number sixty-five thirteen RD zero-two.
So, move to approve.
I heard Mr. Kling first. I have a motion by Ms. Kling. Dr. Showers, will you second that?
Second.
Dr. Showers, second that. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is a construction agreement between the city and Norfolk Southern, so they can go in there and reconstruct the crossing for the new Greenbrier Parkway. It'll be a new five-lane road, and they'll construct the actual improved crossing with signals.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. N is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and the low bidder Reed Contracting Service, Inc., for Wind Drive relocation, project number sixty-five fifteen RD zero-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is an agreement with re-contracting for the construction and relocation of Wind Drive. It's approximately twelve hundred linear feet of four-lane roadway from Technology to Old Madison Pike, and we are adding additional left and right turn lanes on Old Madison Pike. The total contract amount is one million four hundred and sixteen thousand.
And Ms. Martin, what is the purpose of this?
When Calhoun came through and expanded their campus, they're currently under a major expansion, and it benefited us by straightening out the roadway at Wind Drive, and so we'll have a better alignment for traffic.
Thank you. Further discussion?
What's the timeline on that? Because I know it's really blocking traffic there.
There will be a hundred and eighty days for construction.
Further discussion? Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and the low bidder Mid-South Paving, Inc., for Bob Wallace widening and merchant walk improvements, project number sixty-five fourteen DR zero-four.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is an agreement with Mid-South Paving for roadway improvements along Bob Wallace Avenue, just east of Memorial Parkway. What we're doing is adding eastbound left turn lane and a new signal, and that contract amount is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Kling?
Is this part of the quote "economic development incentive" package, or is this just a typical, you know, traffic engineering, road resurfacing type project?
It is a road improvement project. We noticed that the development needed a traffic signal like there and a left turn lane.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the city of Huntsville and Metheny Goldman Architecture Interiors, LLC, for engineering design services for Clinton Avenue Performing Arts Park, project number sixty-five fifteen SP thirty-three. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Martin, can you tell us what a Clinton Avenue Performing Arts Park is?
Yes, sir. It is adjacent to the New Stone Middle School. It's a four-acre tract that we purchased last August, and what it will contain is a parking area that holds a hundred and seventy spaces, and it will be a green open space lawn area for whatever the needs may be in the area.
Okay, so where does the term performing arts come from with grass and parking lots?
We're hoping for some entertainment as far as venues and things like that with food trucks to come and hopefully enhance the area.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Kling?
It's, this whole project has been a great thing, but I got to ask the question that I know I'm going to be asked over the weekend. Is there an amphitheater included in the design, or is that something else separate from that?
No, sir. There is no amphitheater.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is it the intent to eventually have some kind of performing arts center there? I mean, that's a pretty grand title for a parking lot and a green space. Is that why that...
I think only time will tell what happens in that area and what people would like to use it for.
I believe at one point there was some discussion about a gazebo, grassy knoll area, something like that, which would be good, but the adjacent neighborhoods on both sides have expressed concerns about what an amphitheater might mean to the neighborhood.
If I could, this, once completed, this park will be turned over to Parks and Recreation for management, as all of our other parks are. The conversations we've had, our expectation, I mean, it's a passive park. Essentially, it's a flat pad of grass on the park piece of it, and obviously there's parking there to accommodate folks that may choose to use that area. Our expectation is that within appropriate levels of noise and our noise ordinance and things will certainly apply. You could potentially see entertainment there, just like you see in Big Spring Park. I think you'd see similar kinds of things, probably acoustic concerts, things like that. Ultimately, it's going to be the public that places that demand on us to do that programming, but ultimately it'll be Parks and Rec that'll manage the programming in that park.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement between the city of Huntsville and Land Design Solutions, Inc., for landscape, design, and construction administration services for Maple Hill Cemetery, project number sixty-five fourteen SP zero-one, by modification number two. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Ms. McKee, tell us what you're doing.
Okay. This modification is for, excuse me, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. It is simply to match the number of days to the original contact, contract that we had. had. The hope is that we will be ready to sell lots at the end of the summer, so that's good news for us. We've had a lot of rain and with the contract that we currently have, we have to add on a day for each rain date. So, but we're hoping that by mid-June, the construction part will actually be over. Hope y'all will come out and look at it. It's a lot of progress going on.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. R is a resolution authorizing mayor to end agreement between the City of Huntsville and A D S Environmental Services, a division of A D S, LLC, for engineering services for infonet integration for C M O M management, project number sixty-five fifteen S P thirty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, a second by Mr. Culver. Mr.?
Randall Stewart, Water Pollution Control. This is annual renewal of our infonet contract with a local firm, A D S Environmental, to continue to meet the E P A regulations in our collection system.
Thank you.
It's a not-to-exceed one hundred and six thousand and forty dollar contract.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. T is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke B B and T, letter of credit number nine six four one six eight four one eight seven zero 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 one for development agreement between the City of Huntsville and C B E L Jones Farm Southwest, LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Chaufron, could you explain this and where this is and why we're evoking the letter of credit?
Anytime there's a subdivision approved by the planning commission, the improvements that, the public improvements that have to be installed are secured by a letter of credit because it's not really feasible or reasonable to install sidewalks and at the time that the subdivision is first approved. So they're secured by a letter of credit. If the sidewalks and roadways and other public improvements are not installed, then the city has the letter of credit to use or to invoke so that monies can be obtained in order to complete the improvements for the benefit of people who may be buying lots in the subdivision. Now ordinarily, well, in lots of instances, even after the council has approved the invoking of a letter of credit, then the owner of the subdivision will come back and replace the letter of credit with a new one. I suspect that may happen in connection with this one, but they have not yet and it's time to invoke the letter of credit to secure the installation of these improvements for the benefit of the public.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. X is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a real estate agreement among the City of Huntsville and Lori Reed Bragg. Lori Reed Bragg is trustee of the Carl Joe Reed Management Trust, FBO Russell Harrison Reed, and Lori Reed Bragg is attorney in fact for Russell Harrison Reed. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Chaufron, could you explain this, please?
Council members...
Mr. Davis.
I'm sorry, I was a little loud. Back when we passed the 2015 budget, there's money in the capital plan for redevelopment of the Parkway and taking some blotted areas and trying to rebirth those into a new generation of top-of-use. The Lantana area is one of the areas that has been identified both by the city and through our big picture process of the new master plan of the City of Huntsville. This is a piece of that effort around Lantana. What the future use will be will be determined on how we acquire and remove some of these outdated, unusable structures. The Lantana area is kind of unique in that really there's uneconomic remnants in a way. There's still being of use, but they're kind of remnants from the Parkway overpasses and the service roads coming in, so they're kind of got some unique shapes to them. We think they're still of use with different types of uses, but not the current structures of them. A lot of the buildings are vacant and just has no use for many, many years. And through the master plan process, it's been brought to our attention by some professionals we've had and you've said in some of those meetings to get engaged to do that. It may become a passive grass area park or a gateway into North Huntsville. We may assemble it and put it back on the private market. The property was appraised. We're giving less than appraised value. It appraised for two thirty-six and tonight before you, we've got a contract of one ninety-five. It's two lots there at the corner of Lantana and North Memorial Parkway.
What businesses were there when they were open?
It was load Reed Hardware, pretty iconic spot in Huntsville. They've since retired, you know, and have no use of the building. Doesn't have a lot of parking because the building was so large. We think the lot can, once kind of collapsed in, according to what use or need is up there. We're just going to try to assemble some of that, get rid of some of the blight that likes come out of the big picture plan in different sectors. We're not getting in the real estate market of trying to take over and just own a bunch of property on the Parkway, but this was one key area of a hard corner we think we can do some good.
And tell me the concept again. So we're going to buy this, tear it down. Are we going, is the city going to put it up for sale or is it just going to use it for a couple of years?
For now, just grass, just kind of get rid of some of the blight and just put it back in a grass state.
Warehouse it and hold it and see if something comes up?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Further questions?
Because I think this is a tremendous start for what we are trying to accomplish in the city, is to take areas like that that's not being used, create some energy. So I welcome that opportunity for North Huntsville.
And Councilmembers, when I ask, we've gotten several requests from citizens to try to help clean up that area, so, you know, there's been community support to do the actions that we're doing.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at non-rotary communications public. Would anybody like to address the council? Ms. Reed, start us off.
Of course I do. Thank you. We must be going in the real estate business in this city. I've never seen so many buildings being torn down, empty buildings all over this city. We're tearing them down with our city employees, and we're buying them. I don't get it. Y'all got more money than you have S E N, S E, I think that's the way you spell that word. Maybe it's a cent mark, you know, I'm trying to say. Anyway, I don't know what you're trying to do, but I welcome North Huntsville up there. Mr. Showers, you need to be trying to buy some of that whole farm over yonder and see if you could get something in that farm that man had for sale about ten years ago. I mean, just tearing down one building at a time ain't never going to redevelop North Huntsville. You're going to have to get bigger and larger and start putting some millions of dollars in some of that property up there if you're going to do anything for North Huntsville. I'm not preaching. I was in Kling's district and you and Shires and Will Cover and Kling moved me out to Bob Wallace. Now, Mr. Showers, I'll be back in your district at the next election. You and Will Cover and the mayor are up for reelection. I hate to keep moving around town everywhere, but if I have to, I will. Y'all, you can't keep campaigning up there for next year's election. I love you and I think you're doing a good job. I just wanted to tell you, though, I'm lobbying, lobbying big time. Three to five percent raise for the city employees across the board up here because of the incentives in the real estate you're buying. You've got plenty of money. You're fixing to borrow ninety million dollars. So I'm lobbying for the city employees, three percent raise. As much as you all brag on them up there, why would you even think twice? And then the way you give some employees a giant raise, some employees, I'm not calling any names, but I got a real problem. I'm lobbying very hard for that. I want to say, I did call Governor Bentley and I thank every one of you. I faxed him, I didn't call him. When eighteen-year-old and under can carry guns with their mother's permit and they'll have to count to who sells who to what, yes, I faxed Governor Bentley. Some of you need to be faxing. I told him I didn't know we lived in the wild, wild west and I didn't want him to be a part of it in Huntsville, Alabama. And I wish some of you all would lobby and try to stop them. I told him, I hope he didn't sign that bill down there. I was going to call the legislators and they said it's already in the committee's dinner. He asked me, was I met that mean lady up here in Huntsville that tried to keep the city straight? I said, "Don't forget the name because I'll be calling on you down in Montgomery, too." But the big picture, when is the big picture going to come to all of us? I haven't even seen the big picture. Are you keeping it from me? When are you going to bring the big picture out and let us all see it? I think you're hiding something. We all want to see the big picture. And when you have your meetings in the daytime at three o'clock in the evening?
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
Thank you. Time's up and I love you anyway. Thank you.